Welcome everyone to this March 22 meeting of the city council. We're doing it via Zoom. We've just returned from the closed session that started at six o'clock. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kek?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Yeah.
Mayor Warner?
Here. All right. Next up is the pledge of allegiance. Could we have the flag? And I'll, everyone else can be on mute and you can follow along, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So do we have a, any report of action, of any action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney Jason Malkala. No, there is no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you. And the city clerk will remind people at the beginning of citizens forum of how to participate, but we're doing it under the COVID rules and you can find out it's on the agenda. So we'll.
Now with item two, which is the Livermore Housing Authority annual update. And then after that, we'll get into the citizens forum and give the directions just before that. So could we have the staff report, please?
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Great. Thank you so much. My name is Dejon Scott Miller. I am the executive director of Livermore Housing Authority. I have been the executive director since January of 2020, and I will be providing you all with our annual update. And first and foremost, let me thank you all for inviting us to participate in tonight's meeting and share what we have going on.
Well, thank you. I'm glad that you could join us and I think it's very important for everyone to hear what you're doing for the community and welcome in your new role.
Thank you so much and congratulations to you and welcome in your new role there. So let me give you guys a little background on the housing that we provide. So we are a federally funded and regulated entity through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. We provide low income housing to residents throughout the city of Livermore. And through those programs, we have a housing choice voucher program where we currently have a total of 581 participants on that program. We have a tenant based voucher program and that's where those voucher holders are able to locate units on their own. And we have 465 participants with the tenant base voucher. We have currently 60 project based vouchers throughout the city. And that includes the new vouchers at the Chestnut Family and Senior Square. And also, we just recently were awarded 40 new mainstream vouchers from HUD. And that program targets families that are non-elderly, homeless, and at least one person in the household is disabled. So we just got those vouchers this month and we're working with the county of Alameda to house individuals coming out of Project Room Key and also working with Abode Services, Tri Valley Haven, and other homeless care providers throughout the city and the county to house homeless families with those mainstream vouchers. We have 14 VASH vouchers, which are targeted to veterans. And we work with the VA to house veterans throughout the city of Livermore. And we also have two homeownership vouchers. So that's where folks are able to purchase a home and they still pay 30% of their income towards their mortgage and we subsidize the difference. We have 167 units throughout the city of Livermore. And those are spread across four properties. One is our public housing property, which is Leahy Square. We have 125 units there. And then we have Blue Bell Apartments, which has 27 units. La Cusada has nine and Chestnut has 16. Next slide, please. So we are currently planning on submitting an application to HUD to convert our Leahy Square Public Housing Property. And something that HUD has been doing is kind of getting out of the business of public housing because they don't generate, they don't offer enough money to do any big renovations for the property and really do great upkeep for public housing sites. And so through different programs like RAD conversions, demo disposition, and then also voluntary conversions, you're able to take your public housing site out of the public housing program and get market rates for it. And so that's something that Livermore Housing Authority will be submitting an application this year for. And with that, we wanted to do renovations to our site and really make it better for our residents and for the community before we submitted our application. So we did roof replacements at the end of last year. We are doing all new lighting around the property, new cameras. We put in a new playground for our children on site. We redid our community room and our community sitter. We added additional parking throughout the property and we also put in a dog park. And so once we convert, like I said, it'll be market rate for Livermore Housing Authority. However, it will still be affordable for the participants. So each resident would get a voucher and our property would then essentially become like a project based site. So with the renovations, we're really hoping that every resident stays with us. With their voucher, they do have the opportunity to move elsewhere in Livermore or outside of Livermore. But we're really encouraging everybody to stay with us. And with that conversion, we plan to generate an additional $2 million a year in revenues, which would allow us to do other upgrades at the site and acquire other properties throughout the city of Livermore. The next slide, please. So here's a few pictures of what we did and the upgrades that we made. So the first picture is before we didn't have any monument sign or anything in front of our building. So we have some new benches and a monument sign and also some new directional signs around the property for any visitors and for our residents. And behind our clubhouse, we have a barbecue grill and tables for residents to enjoy. Inside of the clubhouse, we have four different computer stations newly put in for residents to come utilize. Along with those computer stations, we also lease out free to the residents tablets and hotspots. Since people are doing distance learning and working from home, we have a lounge area in there. Off to the right there is our new playground and then below that is our dog park. Next slide, please. So looking forward for Livermore Housing Authority is we really are wanting to provide as much housing as possible. With that, we're increasing our project based housing stock. We have been working with Midtown on the Avante project that just got underway recently off First Street. We did some new project based awards in the last month for the downtown Livermore project with Eden Housing, the Pacific Avenue Senior Homes with Catalight Affordable Housing, and then the Vineyards project with the Housing Consortium of the East Bay. We have also started doing renovations on the Blue Bell property. We started renovating the interiors and we're working with Fremont Bank to obtain a loan in order to do some rehabilitation and restoring of the exteriors for Blue Bell Apartments. With our additional funds after conversion, we do plan to provide resident services, which is not something that we currently have. So we really want to be able to provide our residents with everything to to support them and provide to them, you know, everything that they need in life, not just with their housing. We want to increase the stock of housing that we own and operate. And we also want to improve our existing housing at La Cusada and Chestnut and also at Leahy. We recently did a density study to see what would be possible for us to add units there at Leahy as well and increase our stock there. So that's what we're working on at Livermore Housing. And I must say that the staff at the city has been awesome. Fran Reisner and Eric Karanga have been great assets to us. So I appreciate them as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. And again, welcome. And I'm hearing very good things about everything you're doing and the travels that I have now in the Alameda County Conference and Mayor, et cetera. So you're doing a great job there. I see council member Kick and then Vice Mayor Monroe has their hand. Councilmember Kick?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what the conversion meant. So with a project based housing, the Fed gives a voucher worth a certain amount of dollars. So let's say right now they're giving a hundred dollars for the voucher. Now moving it to market rate, they're going to give $500 for the voucher, but the cost to the resident will not change. It's just that they may have the opportunity to move, in which case we might have new people coming in or out that may or may not qualify for those vouchers. Am I understanding that correctly?
Absolutely right. So what they do, what they do with the conversion is they get what's called a tenant protection voucher. And with that tenant protection voucher, they get the option of what they want to do with it. So they can take that voucher and move elsewhere, or they can say, I'm going to remain here and use my tenant protection voucher in the unit, or I'm going to remain here and project base it. So it's really up to that resident, up to that family of what they want to do with their voucher. But we would be able to get market rate for that particular unit.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
So I guess I'm still a little unclear on that same question. So if you can get market rate for it, does it then come, it's basically, I'm sorry, I know this is probably just repeating, but it's, rather than having the subsidy accrue to or stay with the property, it stays with the tenant. Is that another way to put it?
Yeah. So the way it works is public housing and section eight are similar in the fact that the participants on those programs pay 30% of their income to their rent. So for instance, if somebody has a thousand dollars a month, if that's what they make, they pay $300. So in that case, we would get $300 from our residents of public housing. And HUD pays about 400 to 500 per unit for public housing. But if it was turned into a section eight voucher, that participant would still pay their $300 of that, which is their 30%. And instead of just giving $400 in subsidies, we would get, for instance, if a two bedroom unit goes for $2,000, we would get the 300 from the resident and then 1,700 from HUD.
I see. Okay. And then the second question, this is actually the reason my hand was up, is I'm just, could you speak to the need? I know that we've heard this before, but I think it's important to just, you know, stay, you want to increase the stock, but in what context?
In the context of being able to provide affordable housing for those families in need.
So sorry, sorry. What I mean is how many, yes, how many? That's, that's the question.
Oh.
Sorry.
I can't give you a number. I would say that for what we were looking to add at Leahy, for instance, would be about 20 to 30 additional units. But the, the number that I would, that we would want to increase is endless. It's just whatever is possible. So there isn't, there isn't a set number that I can give you, just as much as we would be able to add to our housing through acquiring housing of our own. And then with these partnerships with the Eden and the Midtown and the Housing Consortium, continue to add affordable housing in that way as well.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Kick?
I think when Claudia did her presentation, she said something about a waitlist of a few thousand families waiting. I think maybe that's the number you might be looking for, Trish. Like the people need this. We're not just building it and they'll sit empty. We have, we have waitlists.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with it's an endless need as well. That works for me.
So thank you again for coming and giving us an update. It hasn't been part of our regular updates over the years, but I think, I really appreciate you coming and letting us know what's going on. And I think we want to make this a regular basis given how important this whole issue is to everyone. So thank you. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you all. And great question.
Yeah. So keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we'll move on to citizens forum. And before we begin, could the city clerk remind everyone how to participate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine of calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have members of the public? Do we know how many want to speak in citizens forum?
Yes, Mayor. As of right now, there are four.
Okay. Thank you. What will, just want to remind everyone that in conformance with the Brown Act, no city council action can occur on items presented during citizens forum. And if, you know, tonight it doesn't sound like it'll go past the 30 minutes, but normally at the end of 30 minutes, then we would end the citizens forum until the, and then we can start it up again towards the end of the meeting. So with that, could we have the first person who wants to speak, please?
Honorable Mayor, the first person to speak will be Michelle Kay, followed by Felicia Ziomac, followed by Jackie Coda. Michelle, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Michelle. I'm in fourth grade. I'm here to tell you about my experience with the loud planes that are flying over my neighborhood. It's been bothering me for months. For example, I'm on my school color guard team this year. When I'm doing color guard practices outside in my backyard, I hear lots of planes flying past my house. They are very loud. I can barely hear my coaches talk, even when the volume's up to 100. I have to do it outside because we're doing flags. This is very stressful for me. It's very chaotic. Loud planes, loud planes are not needed in this neighborhood. I walk outside every day with my mom. We walk around the neighborhood and go to the park. But everywhere we go, loud planes follow me. I'm doing an online Zoom class this year. I can hear the loud planes from inside my room, which causes me to lose focus in school. I see 10 times as many planes flying above my school, which is a lot. What will I do when I go back to school next year? I won't be able to focus in the classroom. I hope you realize this problem. Please lower the noise and do not bring big planes here. This, that will be really scary. Thank you for listening and for your time.
The next speaker is Felicia Ziomac, followed by Jackie Coda, followed by Will Bolton. Ms. Ziomac, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Felicia Ziomac. I live in Livermore and a member of Livermore Airport Citizens Group. Question to the city council, how many citizens need to oppose the Kaiser Airport development for you to not accept it? In five weeks, we've amassed over 5,000 signatures on a change.org petition opposing it. We're also leafleting affected residents. We're concerned about the effect of this development on noise levels, quality of life, and property values around the airport and the Tri Valley. It would result in more than doubling aircraft flying in and out of Livermore Airport. How? The proposal not only includes not only providing space for their Boeing 737 fleet, but also adding a 4,000 square foot maintenance building to service aircraft. Also, a fuel storage facility estimated to generate 1 million gallons of annual fuel sales, which is more than double the pre-pandemic sales, which means plane operations in and out would more than double. Also proposed is a 7,000 square foot terminal building, 2,000 square feet of which is for a customs TSA area. Why do we need a customs TSA area? For increased charter flights. Also, a two-story, 38,000 square foot corporate office building to house 30 to 40 employees. Also, 40 mid to large sized airplane hangars, half of which would house jets. If this proposed $15 million development was for just storing Kaiser jets, why would they need 1 million gallons of fuel and a terminal building? Because they're planning more. They're planning to bring in their existing customer base, including an aircraft maintenance business with fuel sales and who knows what else. Once the facilities are built, the city and airport can't regulate the number of flights coming in and out. Jet traffic will grow. During this pandemic, no in-person meetings can be held, allowing citizens to learn complete details and provide feedback. The 90-minute February Airport Commission meeting, when it was discussed and voted on, was not recorded, which could have allowed more transparency. Presenting project details online isn't sufficient and restricts access to seniors. Many people don't have computers or don't know how Zoom works. Don't consider approving this project during this pandemic. Citizens are struggling to make ends meet and feed their families due to being furloughed or terminated from their jobs, so they don't know about this proposal. Citizens deserve full information. After public meetings can resume, the city should present the full facts with the public allowed to ask questions to Kaiser, the airport, and the city council and vote. Your role on the city council is to encourage broad citizen participation. Thank you. I made it.
The next speaker is Jackie Coda, followed by Will Bolton, followed by Vishal Soni. Ms. Coda, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. When I was looking for a home 30 years ago in Livermore and looking over in the area by the airport, it was clearly disclosed to my husband and I that if we were to purchase a home by the airport, we were to sign a disclosure, being fully aware that the airport would be expanded in the future. Information from a hangar owner specifically stated, quote, "We are getting one 737 at a time for maintenance." In order for a 737 to leave Livermore, you can't put enough fuel to go anywhere and can't put many people on it. The FBO fixed base of operation is fuel, is fuel maintenance and aircraft storage, something much needed for the existing aircraft on the field. Currently, we have only two maintenance facilities at KLVK. Neither of them service jets. One of them only does vintage and specialty aircraft. The other guys service the other 85% of the private aircraft. There are some small one-man operations, but two shops cater to the most aircraft on the field. There, there's only one shop growing, but the owner has a huge problem, hangar space. It has been almost 25 years since the last commercial hangars went in. The latest phase of construction, Five Rivers Aviation, was the first development since the 80s. It was long needed because some of the owners have been on the hangar list for decades for a commercial hangar. Decades because people that bought homes near the airport whine and complain about living near an airport. Kaiser is bringing their maintenance to KLVK because there's no more room to grow at Oakland. This airport expansion is needed for people to grow. It's not just a bunch of rich dudes with money forcing their way in. It's good for people that can't afford $1.2 million for a 100 by 100 foot hangar. It's time for the people who have homes around the airport to stop whining and understand they signed disclosures, knowing fully well that the airport has always had the expectation of expanding. They bought a home near an airport that they knew was going to be expanded and it's time to have it expanded. The city needs the expansion and the tax revenue. It's time for you people to stop whining and get with the program. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Will Bolton, followed by Vishal Soni, followed by Carmen Yap. Mr. Bolton, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name's Will Bolton. I'm a Livermore resident, president of Livermore Heritage Guild, and also on the steering committee for the Friends of Tesla Park. We want to thank the city for its support of Tesla Park preservation over the last several years. It's greatly appreciated. As you know, we continue to work to achieve permanent protection of Tesla Park, including working with our local legislators. This year, Central Glazier has introduced SB 799, which is similar to prior legislation the city has supported. As in the past, we ask for the city to support SB 799 by submitting letters of support for this bill as it moves through the legislative process. The deadline for letters for the first hearing in the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee is April 2nd. We expect that Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Kahan will introduce a similar bill and ask that the city will also support her bill when it's ready. We hope the city will continue to support preservation of Tesla Park by submitting letters of support to 799 and the bill to be introduced by Assembly Member Bauer-Kahan. Thank you for consideration of this request.
The next speaker will be Vishal Soni, followed by Carmen Yap. Vishal, please unmute yourself.
Hello, council members. My name is Vishal Soni and I'm resident of Pleasanton and in the airport influence area. Over the past couple of weeks, we have asked many questions to Airport Commission regarding, can you limit the type of aircraft which a new FBO will be bringing? Can you limit them flying over residential neighborhood? Or can you give us like, what, what is the extent of expansion? For everything, we get answered that FAA is the governing authority who has jurisdiction over all these things. So it feels that we have essentially leased out our life to FAA. Like we are the one who will, who will be suffering for all the jets which will be flying over our head. A city and airport leadership should be standing up for cities and not the big corporation whose sole motive is to reward their shareholders, disregarding the neighboring, neighboring communities around the airport. Another point city council need to think is, do you want to make Livermore Airport a gas station where just any jet which is flying close by can come for a cheap fuel and then just take off? All these flights which will come in, it will be flying over either Pleasanton, Livermore, or Dublin neighborhoods. Another question you can ask yourself, like, do you want to make Livermore a garage for storing this aircraft? All these facilities are existing right now in like 30 mile radius. There are like three big airports and this facility is like maintenance, storage, everything is available. Why is Kaiser coming to Livermore? You have to ask that question. They are coming here because it is cheap and they will be like messing with the quality of life of the resident here in all, in Tri Valley. And one last question, like you have to, like, I. And one last question, like, you have to, like, I need answer for is like, who is accountable for noise abatement measures? Like, we are complaining day and night to airport for taking action regarding the noisy planes. But all we say is, okay, your complaint is wrong. Is it a solution? I don't think so. Yeah, city council need to take a closer look at all these complaints what people are raising, and then come to a kind of acceptable solution. That's it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carmen Yap, followed by Carrie Bryan. Carmen, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Gabriel Yap from Dublin, California, and I live in the Jordan Ranch neighborhood. Tonight, I'm here to speak about the Livermore Airport expansion, which I'm against. On Sunday, March 21st, from 8:30 to 11:00 a.m., I noticed that there was a plane flying above my neighborhood at least every five minutes. These planes can get very loud and can be a distraction to people's learning and to people's work. It's already annoying enough to have to be here, to have to hear a plane drone over my head every five minutes. And this expansion would make the noise pollution situation even worse if you were to bring in bigger planes and even more planes than you already have. And I cannot imagine having those every five minutes turn into every three or every two minutes. Did you know that airplanes are responsible for 3% of the world's carbon emissions? So if on Sunday I heard five, if on Sunday I heard a plane over my neighborhood every five minutes, then that's a very big carbon footprint above my neighborhood. So should I have to be concerned to bring my dog out for a walk or just to even step outside and breathe the quote-unquote "fresh air"? Should I have to be concerned about getting the disease just from breathing the air in my neighborhood? Being that there is already many planes flying over my neighborhood, this expansion would make it a lot worse. The Livermore Airport is already affecting neighborhoods like Jordan Ranch enough in air pollution and noise pollution. This expansion would make our situation much worse. So I ask of you, so I ask of you council members, mayor and vice mayor, to vote no on the expansion of the Livermore Airport for the benefit of the Tri-Valley. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carrie Bryan. Carrie, please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Carrie Bryan. Thank you for letting me speak. I am a 10-year resident of Livermore, and I'm on the very far southeast end of town. And I have noticed a significant rise in noise from planes over the last two to three years. In fact, on Sunday afternoons, when the weather's nice, I'm no longer able to use my patio. There are so many planes coming in, it's just constant noise. It does impact the people who aren't living so close to the airport. I'm at least eight to nine miles away. It does make a difference in the treasured country atmosphere of Livermore, and I don't see a need for 737s coming in and out continuously to the Livermore Airport. It's fine to be a small regional airport. It does not need to take over what Oakland can't handle. That would make it Oakland, and then we can all live in Oakland. I wish to have the city council vote against this great, big expansion with the jets. There can be a mod, a medium expansion that does not include 737s to address some of the other shortcomings of the airport. But I really don't think jets are the way to go. It's already loud enough. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
And as our policy, each person gets one, one comment, and that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. With that, move on to the closed public comment and move on to the consent calendar. And I do believe we have a couple of items that we need to discuss with respect to the approval of the draft minutes. I think a couple of council members, or at least one, has to abstain from that. And then, so we'll do the minutes separately. And then I've got a couple of comments on some of these and others might want to as well. On 4.6, I just want to ask a question or make a comment, depends to get a response, is that we're talking about the ERP package? And what I'm interested in is the request, request here is authorize the people to do a needs assessment. And I would like to make sure that any needs that are not standard ERP package be called out and noticed, because I would hope we're not going to do any customization. So that's one comment. And I would, and then on 4.9, I'd like to point out, I want to thank Supervisor Halbert for his help on this opportunity for the mental health grants. I know it hasn't been completely approved yet, and I also want to recognize Melissa Hernandez, who works in Halbert's office and who's also the mayor of Dublin, for her work on making this opportunity come to pass. So with that, are there any comments from our members of the Subcommittee on Homelessness? Would like to mention anything on 4.9? Vice Mayor Monroe.
I'm just really excited to see this coming to pass. I think the issue of mental health is hugely important. And I did receive a note from Axis that I wanted to share because I think it speaks to, you know, it says better than I can just how important this is. So it's, this project bridges a gap in care in our community. It creates access to therapists, psychiatric, and care coordinator, who helps, who will help families navigate the often complex challenges of establishing ongoing treatment. Short-term assistance for anyone experiencing mild to moderate mental health situation, whether insured or uninsured. And so this is a way to receive timely support for a community healthcare center that will help prevent more acute episodes. So it saves money, it helps people where they need it. It keeps, it makes, it makes everything better. And I just think it's worth, you know, I'm glad that we're spending a little bit of time discussing it because it really does fill this a critical need. So thank you to all who helped make it possible.
Councilmember Banano.
Maybe Councilmember Carling, who's another member of the homeless Subcommittee, might want to say a few words first. I'm happy to let him go first.
I don't see a hand.
I thought you were going to call on me, since I'm half of the.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to point out, I mean, echo what my colleague, the vice mayor, said, but I also want to point out that we have some very capable team players on the city staff, Eric Oranga, Claudia Young, Fran Reisler, and others, that have helped make this possible. I mean, I think everyone is acutely aware of what is needed in terms of providing adequate mental health to those in most need. And so kudos to them and congratulations to them for putting, helping to put this all together. So that, again, thanks very much for the opportunity.
Amen.
Wasn't, wasn't this an outgrowth of some of the conversations that your Subcommittee had as well?
Yes.
So thanks to the two of you as well. Let's see, who's next? Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, so I'll just say I also really applaud this pilot program. It's, as has been mentioned, it's a great example of our cities working together regionally, our city council members on the homeless committee, our city staff, as mentioned, and also Axis, our nonprofit partners. Every time we get one of our nonprofit, we partner with our nonprofits, it usually leads to something very good. And I think this is going to be a tremendous, have tremendous value. You know, like many families, I've had family members who struggle with mental illness issues, mental health issues, and I think that this kind of acute urgent care program will literally be life-saving. I'm fairly certain that this can make a huge difference to individuals and their family members. I do have a couple of quick questions. I'm wondering whether, you know, we've heard a lot about how some of our students or young people are struggling through the pandemic in particular, and even pre-pandemic. We hear about situations with students dealing with a lot of emotional stress and mental health issues. I'm wondering, will minors be able to access this program? And then my second question, I'll just ask my second question, and then I do have one more comment. And the second question is, obviously, the point of this is to avoid having people call 911. So I think the, the marketing or the communication that this program exists in order to be able to divert people directly to these more appropriate resources for whatever crisis they may be dealing with is going to be important. So I'm sure this has been considered, but, but I just wanted to emphasize and hope that there'll be a marketing communication program. So those are my two questions. Maybe, I know we have a few folks here that might be able to answer them.
Yes, Councilmember Banano, it's Mark Roberts, your city manager. And I'm going to ask Claudia Young, our project manager, to weigh in on that. And then we also do have a representative from Axis available this evening as well. So Claudia?
Evening, Mayor and council members. So yes, underage youth will be able to access. I'm going to defer to Dr. Penny to speak to the programmatic part of that on how that would happen as far as consent.
Dr. Penny, please unmute yourself.
Dr. Penny?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. It sounds really low.
Okay. Is that better?
We need a little bit higher.
I'm on my computer. So in regards to the minors, this program will provide care for anybody five years old and up, the individuals themselves and also the families as needed. As far as individuals who can participate, we will be working with parents to gain consent for treatment for minors. However, there is a possibility to provide treatment to minors without parental consent. But that's clearly defined by the law, and we follow California law and those regulations. In regards to marketing, that has been discussed already with our internal marketing team as well as some of the local police departments and other community organizations that we work with. So we're hoping to spread the word widely.
Okay, thank you. I think I got most of that. I appreciate it. And again, thank you for putting this program together. Can I just make my final comment? So, you know, I know there's lots of other programs that we are considering that are possible programs that we can continue to support in various ways. And it looks like perhaps if this community grant, this county grant comes through, I'm just hoping that we may be able to not necessarily use all of the money that we're allocating tonight to this program, and there's the potential to possibly support some other services that address mental health issues. And I'd be very, very much encouraging staff to at least bring those to us to consider how else we may be able to help in such a critical area. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember K.
Since we're already talking about this one, I'll start with this. This is great therapies for everyone. I think it should be easier to access. I know this is critical care, which is extremely valuable. I think this will be good for us as a city to already have a program like this in place as there are multiple state, or at least one state bill that would ask cities to develop a program like this. So it looks like we could be ahead of the game if those things happen, which I think is great. And I just wanted to point out, because there was some confusion from some community members, that item 4.4 is is not a new project. It's, it's complete. So is that correct, Mark? This is a complete project, and we are, we are just taking over maintenance. It's not a new project.
Councilmember K, Mark Roberts, your city manager, and yes, 4.4 is the acceptance of permanent maintenance. So that is the trail along the channel and the bridge over Murrieta. And we are accepting permanent maintenance of that project. It is now complete.
Right. And any new projects most generally wouldn't be in consent. There was some confusion there. Generally, that's a broad statement.
Hard to accept something that's not built yet.
Right.
And your, Councilmember K, you are correct that you will be having a workshop as a part of your overall budget process in May. And during that workshop, you will be considering the capital improvement program that will list all of the potential projects that will occur during the coming two-year program. And that workshop is dedicated to just that item, essentially your operating budget and your capital budget. So the entire evening is related to those various projects and your operating budget. And at that time, it's when those projects are identified. And ultimately, then in June, when the council adopts their budget, including the capital improvement program, the projects get on essentially the list. At that point, we go through the process of doing the final design, put them out to bid, and then when the bid comes back, that item is before the council. And many times at that point, it is a consent calendar item. So the time to sort of have a conversation about what projects are included in the capital improvement program is during that workshop or during the adoption. So in May and June of this coming year, is a perfect time for the public to weigh in on those issues.
Perfect. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay. One other comment I want to just point out on 416, giving the Director of Emergency Services the ability to allocate the funds is in response to the suggestion that Councilmember Carling made to make sure that we could have that flexibility. So there, there we go. So with that, could we, can I get a motion for 42 to 16? And then we'll come back to the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney. Do we have any public comments to take?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, do we have any public comments?
No comments have been received, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we'll open and close that. So can we, how about a motion? We had the, who was it that moved 2 to 16?
I did, I believe.
Okay, and who's seconding it? Vice Mayor Monroe, is you seconding it?
Sure, but I think we beat Brittany out for it, but that's okay. I'm good with that.
All right. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember K?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Okay, now for the approval of the draft minutes, can I have a motion on that?
I'll move approval. Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Jane.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember K?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. All right, we're just finished the consent calendar. And time to move on to the, just rolling down to it, the public hearings. And it's the 5.1 is hearing to consider the annual progress report on our city's progress towards our regional housing needs allocation. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, it's Mark Roberts, your city manager. The, the item this evening is on your annual progress report. And Assistant Planner Tricia Pontau is going to lead us through that discussion. Tricia?
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can you see my screen, my slides here? Yes, okay, great. So this is the 2020 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. The Housing Element is one of the mandated elements of general plans in California, and its purpose is to help local governments adequately plan for existing and projected housing needs. The annual progress report, or what we call the APR, is a tool for tracking progress towards meeting the goals and objectives in the housing element. The APR is due to the state every year on April 1st. And it's a statutory requirement, and filing on time also keeps the city eligible for various. And it's it's a statutory requirement and filing on time also keeps the city eligible for various housing grant programs. So if council accepts the APR tonight, staff will fire file the APR with the state by the April first deadline. So over the past few years, the state has enacted new legislation that has significantly expanded reporting requirements for APRs. In prior years, the reporting requirements essentially included the number of building permits issued by income level and then a summary of our progress implementing our housing programs. And the 2017 State Housing Legislation Package added this list of additional reporting requirements for APRs, which give them a more comprehensive view of how projects move through the various stages of approval. And then the newest reporting requirement is the surplus property central inventory, which I will discuss a little later in the presentation. So the first goal of the city's housing element is to address the diverse housing needs of all economic segments of the community by allowing for a range of housing types at different price levels and different densities. And the framework for quantifying housing need by in income is the Regional Housing Need Allocation or RENA. And it's based on the state's projection of population growth for each region. The City of Livermore share of the Bay Area's need between 2015 and 2022, which is the existing housing element cycle we're in right now, is just over 2,700 units. The city is not required to construct all of these units, but we are required to show that there is enough land zoned for this amount of residential development in the city and help facilitate residential development on these properties. The RENA numbers are divided into income categories based on the percentage of the area's median household income. So the categories are extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. We don't have a specific RENA requirement for the extremely low income housing section. So any of any of the units we produce at that income level are grouped in with the very low income category. So Tables A two and B of the annual progress report track the number of building permits issued for housing units in each of these income categories, including market rate and affordable units. The building permits issued are what counts towards meeting your RENA requirements. And in twenty twenty, the city issued building permits for a total of 167 units, which is a significant decline from previous years, reflecting impacts of COVID and the continued decrease of residentially zone easily developable land in Livermore. About three fourths of the units that we issued permits for this year are above moderate. And the vast majority of the units are attached housing types, so attached single family housing and multifamily apartment buildings. We still anticipate issuing about 300 to 400 units annually over the next several years after the pandemic due to the construction of approved projects and a bunch of other projects that we have coming down the pipeline. And the city has met its RENA goals for the above moderate and moderate income categories. So any additional housing units that we build at those income categories don't count towards RENA progress, but they certainly help increase the supply of housing in Livermore. And the city has not met its targets for the low and extremely low, very low income categories, which is the case for most cities in the state. So we are not unique in that. Table D of the annual progress report tracks the housing our progress implementing the programs in the housing element. So the city has a number of efforts underway that are aimed at addressing the community need for more affordable housing options at the lower income levels. So the city allows and encourages accessory dwelling units. And in 2020, we issued permits for 39 accessory dwelling units, which is actually up from last year. So despite the pandemic, we saw an uptick in accessory dwelling unit applications. So that's definitely a popular option right now around the city. We also implement an inclusionary ordinance. And in 2020, we had four deed restricted units dedicated to low and moderate income households as part of the inclusionary ordinance requirements in the Auburn Grove Development. And then we implement a variety of other programs to provide housing assistance, supportive services, and to construct new affordable housing projects in the city. So now I'm just going to highlight some of the projects that are either under construction or under review around the city. There's a lot going on right now, so I'll try to get through them pretty quickly. But so the first one is the Chestnut Square Family Building, which was recently finished construction. This was the second phase of the Chestnut Square Project, the first being the senior housing. So this is the second second phase that has 42 units for low, very low and extremely low income households, and it dedicates some of the units for people experiencing homelessness. And there are a lot of onsite support services and community space with programming for youth. The next is the Chestnuts where Town Homes, they started construction in 2020. And this is the third and final phase of the Chestnut Square project, and this is 44 market rate town home units. Okay, also continuing under construction is Auburn Grove. This is under construction for a couple of years now, so they're probably getting close to finishing. As a development of 100 town homes with 15 units dedicated for low and moderate income households. You've probably seen this project going up downtown, probably getting questions about it. This is a legacy Livermore project. Continued construction in 2020. This project will have 222 market rate rental units and approximately 14,000 square feet of retail space along First Street. And in November of 2020, the city issued a temporary use permit for 28 tiny homes for individuals experiencing homelessness. And this is on the Crosswinds Church site. So the these tiny homes have been delivered to the site. They're not in they're kind of in the front of the site now. Eventually, they will be placed in the back of the site, as you can see here. And they will provide all sorts of onsite services for these residents as well. And we the city staff are working on Development Code Amendment and modifying the church's conditional use permit to be able to allow them to stay here longer term. But we got them started under this temporary use permit. Next is the Avance project is under construction. This is 44 units for persons with developmental disabilities and also includes some dedicated units for homeless seniors, and it provides also onsite residential services. Next is the Vineyard Vineyard 2.0 project. This is what got entitlements approved in 2020, and now it's under building permit review. This is 24 units of permanent supportive housing with a lot of onsite supportive services, including the new Open Heart Kitchen facility. And I'm sure you all remember a couple of months ago, the Isabelle Neighborhood Specific Plan was adopted. And this allows for over 4,000 new residential units, has a 20% inclusionary requirement, and then an overall goal to have 25% affordability throughout the planned area. Staff is reviewing entitlements for the downtown workforce housing and the Pacific Avenue senior housings. This was the land swap with the Stockman's Association that will allow approximately 130 workforce housing units downtown on the Livermore Village site, and then up to 140 low and very low income senior housing units on the Pacific Avenue site. So finally, the surplus land central inventory. So the state made changes to the Surplus Land Act that established a new statutory reporting requirement for the 2020 APR. And the legislation requires that each local agency establish and report an inventory of publicly owned parcels that it has identified as surplus land. And generally, the purpose of the legislation is to promote affordable housing on development, affordable housing development on unused or underutilized public land throughout the state to respond to the existing affordable housing crisis. So at this time, staff has identified two publicly owned vacant parcels near the the corner of Stanley and Murrieta that will likely not be necessary for the city's use. However, we don't see these parcels as necessarily good candidates for affordable housing development. They're not zoned for residential use, and they have some development challenges, including a lack of safe access to a public road, so to have to go across other parcels to get to a road. It's very close to the railroad tracks, and it's interadjacent to the Royal Metro Flood Channel. So a lot of tricky development concerns in this area. So we don't necessarily think these are good candidates for affordable housing sites, but we're required to report any surplus land to the state as far as this new requirement. So with that, we are recommending the city council provide opportunity for public comment consistent with state law, adopt a resolution accepting the 2020 Housing Element APR, and then adopt a separate resolution approving the surplus property central inventory. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Hey, before we go to questions, I want to find out, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how many do we have?
As of right now, one.
Okay, I would like to open the public comment on this, and then we'll go to questions.
The first speaker is Jackie Cota. Jackie, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. That was a very good presentation. I'm wondering, I'm looking on the city website, and I'm trying to search for all of this information with regard to all of this planning development. And I'm unable to locate any of it. I'm wondering why that is not available. So I'm just hoping that I could get some just some quick questions answered with regard to where it is located, and if it's not, if it could please be published so that this information can be reviewed by the public as it is being presented for for future review. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And perhaps staff, you could mention where that information can be found on the website?
This is Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. Currently, the the best place to look would be in the annual progress report itself, which is a part of the city council packet, which is available from the homepage. We do have other information in the community development section of the website that talks about some of these projects.
Okay, perhaps an easy way to get to all of it from the website would be would be helpful. Councilmember Kick? That was that. I'm closing the public comment. Now we're moving on to the council.
Sorry, didn't want me to unmute. Thank you for that report. I think there's there's a lot of good information in there. And one of the things that I wanted to just bring up to the public, if you're wondering about how do you find out about these housing projects? How would you learn about them? You can get on a waitlist. I've been on the waitlist for the whole five years that I've almost six years that I've lived in Livermore. And even if it's not your turn and you don't get pulled, it's extremely valuable information. Learning about where these new developments are. A lot of this information does come out in those public emails. It says, look, we're starting development year, and look, these houses will be available for sale at a certain time. So I suggest that anybody interested, you can you can get that access. I think I just went on the Livermore website and searched housing. And, you know, our websites need some work, but you should be able to to find it there. I also thought it was interesting to learn about. I know that we have to report the surplus. I agree that that's probably not the best place, but just based on what I'm seeing and the numbers that I saw. I was wondering, Tricia, if you could put your screen back up. I had a question. It was saying how many units we had. It was one of the charts. It said we had like zero low right there. Okay, so the building permits issued is not the same as what we have planned, I'm assuming. So I with with what we see on the docket, you know, not not quite yet, we do we have a number for like what our plan looks like? Am I missing that? Is that what the RENA 2015, 2022 number is?
Yeah, so this column, if you can, can you see my cursor? This column, yeah, 2015 to 2022, those are the number of units we are supposed to construct in each income category assigned to us. And then these numbers are just the permits that we've issued. And that's what counts towards achieving those RENA numbers. So it doesn't matter if we've approved the entitlement. It doesn't matter if we've rezoned property to allow for more housing. It's the RENA tracking is really based on building permits that are issued.
Okay. Could would it be possible for us to get information about if everything got a building permit like Isabel, like downtown, what those numbers would be? Because it seems to me, just based on my quick math, that we would be much closer to the goal if all of those things moved forward. Is that a correct assessment?
Yeah, we actually have more than enough land zone in the city to meet these RENA numbers. So we have an excess of units. It's just a matter of finding developers and people who will want to come develop, and we can get it to the point where we issue permits. So we 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 provide more than enough space and opportunity. It's just sort of, you know, what the market is calling for, what the developers want to move on. So we do have, we do have plenty of space and opportunity to meet these.
Okay, so we're doing our part. Good job, us. We're just waiting on the market to fill the gap. Cool. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And this is Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. I would just point out, I have a few numbers here. So we have three projects that don't have building permits issued yet, but are in progress. So Vineyard will have 24 units of housing available. Pacific Avenue Senior will have 140, and the Eden Downtown Project will have 130.
I just want to clarify, it's not just the market, but we're looking at, you know, the funds are coming from the state and federal county, et cetera. And that's that's the key here. So we've got the space designated. We don't have the funds.
Right.
Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Really great report, very always very helpful to see how we're doing and what the challenges are. Also, a lot of great activity in the pipeline. So I just want to, if the report talks briefly, it sort of understates the issue, and I just wanted to call it out about on page four of the report goes on to, due to high sales and rental costs, which is the cost of having housing here, all of the low and very low income units and the majority of moderate units produced in the city require subsidy, and the city does not have sufficient affordable housing funds to subsidize subsidize enough units to reach some of these goals as we as we were seeing. I think I just want to say the getting these affordable housing projects built are really hard. And when we do it, it's a huge accomplishment. It requires a nonprofit developer, which there aren't that many of them. And 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 we have worked with some very good ones in this town. It requires funding, a variety of different kinds of fundings. It requires the state and county to participate. It requires the city to have the will and the commitment and and in some cases provide some resources for this as well, and not only staff, but funding in some cases. So these projects are incredibly hard to put together. And when when we do them, we should be very proud of them, but recognize that you know, they're really important. They're not easy to put together. You don't just decide to build an affordable housing project anywhere. It all has to come together. So I just think that it's important to recognize that point. And that's really all I want to say, that that when you get the ingredients together, it doesn't happen very often, and it's really important that we we work hard to take take advantage of every opportunity we have. And and I think I'm proud of proud of our city, and I'm proud of our staff for having done as much of this as we have. So that
You're here.
Hey, Vice Mayor Monroe?
So I I echo the here here. And I was going to say something similar. Just in terms of just how very difficult it is to to make these projects happen. I was struck I was struck when Chestnut Square opened up, and I heard the discussion from Eric Uranga on, actually, the walkthrough of just how many times, how many sources were pulled together to make that project happen. As we're discussing, you know, the upcoming Eden Housing, as we're looking at the Vineyard, as we're looking at all of these projects. Yes, we need to celebrate them. Yes, these are difficult. And, and each one is unique in a way it's difficult. And then thinking about the Housing Authority presentation earlier, the need is endless. See, I'd rather say endless than, than take the thousand, because it really does point out that it's not going to go away. This is something that we need to continue to manage. So I'm proud that we're doing what we're doing. I really appreciate the careful and thorough report. And as we're going forward, boy, it sure would be nice to find sources to make this easier, to serve more people.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks. I just, again, Tricia, thanks for the report. One thing that hasn't been mentioned was this joint powers authority that we, we helped establish. Can you say something about that? Because it's turning 162 unit project that's been marketed into low to middle income restricted housing. And that's not on, that's not, I'm not suggesting it needs to be counted here, but I think that's another point that the staff has found an opportunity to, to really help and contribute to. So can you tell, you know what I'm talking about, Tricia? Can you talk some about that?
Yeah, I know a little bit about that. Our housing staff know a lot more about it than I do. But the reason that I didn't include it in the APR this year is because if you want to have those units count towards your RENA allocations, which I think we do, you have to have some more conversations with HCD. There's some really strict statutory requirements about what you, what can and can't count towards your RENA allocations. And we haven't had an opportunity to talk with them yet about whether we can count those units as, towards RENA. We can include that in the APR. It's just informational, just letting them know we did this. But we may be able to get them to count towards our RENA allocation. So I just want to be able to have those conversations with HCD first, and we can put them on the next APR. And I think those units are going to start turning affordable as they, as they turn over. So it's not something that already happened, and we're going to miss it. So I think we can put it on the next one, and hopefully try to get some, some counts towards our RENA allocations.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I understand, you know, I'm not suggesting or trying to impose this on the count, but I just wanted to make sure that the public understands that it isn't just building new housing. It's also taking advantage of partnering with others to turn over some existing housing to low and, and middle income folks. And so I just wanted to point that out to the, to the public that are, that are listening, that it's more than just what you see here on this chart that the staff are working toward. So again, thanks very much.
Okay, any other comments? If not, could we get a motion for, to adopt the resolution?
Here are all moves that we adopt the resolutions as suggested by staff.
And I see, okay, good. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kek?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Yeah, Warner?
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. We're on to item six, matters for consideration, six dot one. The oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID-19 emergency.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. It's Mark Roberts, your city manager, again, also your Director of Emergency Services. And with that, let me share my screen, and all right. So as you know, at each meeting, you have asked me to come back with a report on what we are doing as your staff and what developments are appropriate to be shared, both with you as the council and overall with the community. So want to start off this evening with the continued good news. As you can see from the two long trend lines there, the blue being Alameda County, and the orangish color being the city of Livermore, our overall average case counts on our seven day rolling average per hundred thousand continue to fall. And that gets, of course, even more impressive as our numbers get significantly smaller than they were back at the beginning of the year. Because of course, the progress gets a little tougher when the numbers are relatively low. And so of course, the, the thing we're on the lookout for is the, the, that the numbers continue to make progress. So a little more detail on those numbers. We have almost 4,100 cumulative cases in the city of Livermore, but our seven day rolling average now has dropped below four cases per hundred thousand population. So that's a dramatically better number than it was just a couple of months ago, and still actually showing progress, although slowing from the last two weeks. At the county level, this slide displays both the tiers. So you'll remember that we were in the purple tier or tier one, and then moved to tier two. And so we are in tier two, or the red tier currently. If you take a look at the numbers from Alameda County, which are adjusted case rates, and they're adjusted for a number of factors, including one of them being the amount of testing that we do. We do more than the minimum testing. So our numbers are adjusted accordingly for that. You can actually see that we currently meet the criteria for tier three, or the orange or moderate tier. So that's very good news. There is a waiting period as we move from one tier to the next. But if these numbers hold now over the next 10 days or so, we should see Alameda County moving to the orange tier as early as the end of this month. So very exciting news. You're aware, obviously, that the red tier allowed some significant improvement, mainly with activities that are allowed indoors. A number of activities that were prohibited are now permitted. And then the orange tier continues that path of allowing more indoor activities. One example is, for example, places of worship or places of gathering are allowed to have more folks indoors. Or restaurants are allowed to move from a 25% of capacity to a 50% of capacity between the red tier and the orange tier. So very good news on that front, and we continue to make progress. Giving a quick recap of our overall testing, almost 32,000 tests have been conducted by Stanford Valley Care at the Alameda County Fairgrounds, and almost 4,000 tests have been conducted here in Livermore. And you can see that Valley Care has been operating since last April. And of course, City Health Urgent Care has been operating since just this January. I did want to call your attention to the fact that Valley Care currently has a combined testing and vaccination site at the county fairgrounds. And they're going to move the testing portion of that to the city of Livermore. So they'll be relocating on their campus on Stanley Boulevard, the testing portion of that facility, that operation for a couple of reasons. One is to provide better local service here in Livermore. And the other is because the amount of testing required has dropped. So during the, the past several weeks, their average daily test count has dropped from a little over 200 tests a day to noticeably less than that. And so the campus on Stanley Boulevard can handle the, the testing capabilities that they need now, and also even allow for some growth, should that growth need to happen, if we do have a change in circumstance. So good news on the testing front for those who are in the city of Livermore will have more options. The criteria at the, at the Stanley Boulevard campus will allow both appointments and walk-ins, both doctor referrals and those that self-refer. So it's a, it's a full-service testing site. Switching to vaccinations, you can see overall on the data on this screen that almost 683,000 doses of vaccine have been administered in the county of Alameda. And you can see over there inside the red circle, city of Livermore has had over 22,000 first doses and over 12,000 second doses. And for those who are inquiring, some of you may, may know, of course, that one of the vaccines that's now available does not require two doses. So where does that show up in these numbers? And the answer is, when it's, when a single dose vaccine is given, that shows up as a second dose, because it is meant to convey the fact that the vaccination process is complete. So on this chart, those 12,600 vaccines that are shown as second doses are made up of a combination of the second dose of two-dose vaccines and all of the single-dose vaccines. To put this in perspective, of doses per hundred thousand with our neighbors, you can see Dublin, Livermore, and Pleasanton with both their first doses in blue and their second doses in orange. And you see, we are in the middle of the pack of the three communities. This, however, does not adjust the data for how many folks in each of those three communities are eligible for the vaccines. Pleasanton does have, by percentage, slightly more folks who meet the age-based criteria. And so that is actually one explanation of why their numbers are slightly ahead, because of the total number in their population that are that age, and the fact that they have several large-scale senior projects. But overall, we are sort of right there in the mix as far as total number of doses, both first and second. So starting on March 15, the state expanded vaccine eligibility to everybody 65 and above, and a variety of essential workers in healthcare, food agriculture, education, childcare, and emergency services. It expanded it to persons who are 16 to 64, who are deemed to have highest risk due to complex health conditions. Persons who work reside or recently decided in a high-risk congregate living setting. And that includes, of course, all of the previous congregate care for seniors and older adults. And added to that list now is correctional facilities, homeless shelters, and behavioral health facilities. Persons experiencing homelessness have been added to the list of eligible criteria. Public transportation personnel, including airport and commercial airline workers, as well as buses and other transportation services. So those folks are the, make up the eligible list of the overall population. And of course, vaccine supply is still somewhat limited. So while these people are eligible, you do ultimately need to get a appointment with a healthcare provider or at one of the locations where there is a point of distribution. Alameda County Fairgrounds in the Tri-Valley is the largest point of distribution. It is a large-scale drive-through, appointment-only facility, and is actually, has three parallel vaccination processes that actually work in concert with each other, including Alameda County Public Health, the Stanford Healthcare Valley Care System, and the Sutter Healthcare System. So our website, the city of Livermore website, does have information to help you navigate through your options of getting a vaccine if you are eligible. In addition to that large-scale regional permanent point of distribution, the city, along with the school district and the park district, hosted a one-day point of distribution in partnership with Walgreens on March 11. 475 individuals were vaccinated using the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is a one-dose protection. And the clinic ensured that the vaccines were available to all of our educational service providers and related professionals as the primary focus, as well as the other folks on that list that you saw earlier on the earlier slide. One of the main things that we were working is to make, to make sure is that all of our school district personnel who wish to have the vaccine were able to get vaccinated. And in fact, that was the case. And of course, the big news community-wide today is that the school district did reopen elementary classrooms today. And so we're very excited about that, and they're actually opened classrooms across the spectrum all the way up to high school, which was a second tier, but they were able to move that and align that with the opening today. So all of the various grades are on a hybrid schedule, where they spend some of the days of the week at school and some of the days remote learning. So we're looking forward to hearing back from the school district and working with them to make sure that this opening period, as well as this spring semester, goes very smoothly. I think, of course, all of us are hoping for a fall that includes full return to full in-person learning for grades across the spectrum. Want to give you a quick update on the various programs that the city of Livermore has approved. The council's approved more than $2 million, but all actually was done in several different pieces. But out of the $2 million, you can see that the citywide small grant assistance program has been fully expended. The County Cares Act Grant Program has now been fully expended. The $150,000 Gift Livermore Program is a little over half expended. And so we're very excited about that program that continues to be very popular, both with our matching funds and, of course, the community reaching out and purchasing those gift cards. And so a significant number of those gift cards that have been purchased have been redeemed. So a win-win across the board, allowing people to support our local businesses, giving them an incentive to do so, and putting those dollars to work in the community immediately. The council also approved $115,000 for a residential rental assistance program. And we are coordinating that with the county as a part of our overall allocations. And that will happen here shortly. And $409,000 for the commercial rent abatement matching program. As of the time we wrote this slide, we had over 30 applications. In fact, in, in just a little while since this slide was written, we now have over 35 applications so far. And the first batch of payments are in progress. We're very happy about that process. And of course, we did a wide range of emergency orders. Some of those extensions of your emergency orders were on your council agenda this evening. We continue to monitor all of those various programs and extensions and flexibility that we've granted, making sure that we're extending those appropriately to last through the rest of the pandemic while we're in an emergency state. But also, of course, looking forward to the time when we can exit from the state of emergency that we've been in now for over a year. The last item on there is our outdoor dining retail flex zone changes. And of course, if you've been in downtown, you know that we have a significant portion of our parking areas and landscape areas in downtown. We're transformed into outdoor dining areas. We are now, of course, on the path back to having indoor dining, where 25% capacity is now permitted indoors. And if things hold during the next few weeks, by the beginning of April, that number could be up to 50% of capacity indoors. We are beginning conversations with our downtown restaurateurs, our downtown retailers, our downtown association, as well as, you know, members of the community on the transition process. Because on the one hand, we absolutely want to make sure that our restaurants have the time to recover. And the recovery will happen in several phases, some of which we've defined, and, and most of which we are in early discussions and will work, you know, over the coming month or two to define the plan, make sure we get wide input into that plan, and then move forward with those changes. The first of the noted changes, however, will be by the end of May, the special regulations that allow the tents to be placed on public property in public open spaces or on private property. That exception will end. As you know, there was, there is a state law that governs the length of time that those temporary uses can be in place due to the emergency. We have done additional inspections to extend the time when those tents were permitted, but that will be coming to an end in May. Of course, by that time, we would return to our normal program of having essentially tables, chairs, and umbrellas out in our public areas, and, and so to begin to return, although in expanded way, to normal. We'll be working sort of with the retailers and the restaurateurs in downtown, because of course, there's a natural tension between the different users of the downtown over what's the best use for those parking spaces. So lots of discussions in our future on that front, but we did want to give you a heads up that your staff has begun that process. Just a quick set of numbers on your Gift Livermore Program. You see that our contribution is about 55%, 56% used, but 1,200 cards redeemed and 3,600 e-gifs sold. That's a lot of e-gifs. So very, very good news. And a lot of dollars out in the community circulating. You see more than $160,000. You see more than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars total. And with that, I'm available for questions or direction.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks, Mark, again, for a very complete report. You didn't, I noticed that there was vaccine availability for the homeless on Friday the nineteenth. And I just wondered if you could report on the folks that took advantage of that? Do you have any information about that?
I do. Yes, on three nineteen, Alameda County basically helped vaccinate forty-four of our unsheltered individuals. Twenty of them were vaccinated at Vineyard Church. And twenty-four individuals were vaccinated at the Tri-Valley Haven Shelters. So, we really did. And these, of course, are folks that who are not a part of the programs where they are located in one of the hotels throughout the county. Those are being vaccinated separately, coordinated by the county. But these are folks who have remained homeless even with that program in place. So we were very excited to coordinate with the county of Alameda and, of course, our service provider, City Serve, who helps coordinate services for our homeless folks. And so forty-four individuals were served on the nineteenth. In addition, the county has noted that they will be scheduling future dates. And so we'll be coordinating on those as well and getting the words out to the homeless community in particular, through our food programs, through our community partners and through our homeless liaison officers.
Did they get the Johnson and Johnson? I'm just curious about that.
Yes, it's correct. They have prioritized the one dose for folks who do not have a permanent housing location. And that's so if they'll ultimately relocate between doses, we don't have a situation where people are unprotected. So they have prioritized the one dose for those in particular, although you'll also note that we prioritize that at our local point of distribution as well.
Perfect. Thanks very much.
Councilmember Kik.
Can you give me the number of fully and partially vaccinated together? What is that number again? It was on the chart.
It was on the chart there. And so I can actually read that off of just a quick second. So we had in Livermore twenty-two thousand two hundred and three, I believe it is, first vaccinations and twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-eight second.
Okay, so.
The twelve thousand obviously either got a first vaccination before they got it or were a one dose.
Okay, so that's twenty-two, I'm doing math plus twelve. Thirty-four. So I did some like quick math on the fact that not everybody can get this vaccine because you have to be at least sixteen, for some of them eighteen for others. And so if you do the math like that and we have seventy, about seventy thousand eligible residents who can even access the vaccine at all, like are the correct age, we're at a much higher percentage than fourteen percent of of people being able to be vaccinated. So I think that's kind of exciting to look at it in in that way. If that's the case, we're much closer to like forty percent vaccinated for those who are currently eligible based on their age. So when I saw those numbers, I just got really excited because, you know, eighteen and under really, they don't, they don't really have the option right now. So it will be interesting to see what that number looks like when we're when we're all done. So just sharing my little math that I that I just did.
You are correct, Councilmember Kik. And for some subgroups, it's much, much higher than that. For some of our oldest seniors, vaccination rates are over seventy percent in those categories where they've been eligible for a long period of time. So we're making a tremendous amount of progress with some of the groups. And right now, our challenge, of course, is vaccine eligibility. Soon, it will be the flip side is making sure that everyone's aware that vaccines are finally available when that happens. The state of California has confirmed through the governor and the health department that they believe that they will be able to meet the goal that the federal government has set of by May, having vaccines available to everyone for which it has been tested for. And you did note the difference between the sixteen and eighteen-year-old fresh years threshold. But essentially, for all adults would be able to get a vaccination as soon as May. And of course, that's tremendously good news as we try and get up to that number, which depending on which healthcare professional, you know, you're listening to, does need to be somewhere up in that seventy to ninety percent range. Seventy gives you a good herd immunity. And of course, eighty and ninety give you, you know, much better protection. So we're certainly preparing for the time when our major task will move from actually providing the vaccine and facilitating that to providing information, transportation, looking at special needs groups, barriers to getting vaccinated and all of those things because it's at times sooner than we think.
Very exciting. I'd love all of this. Thank you for reporting.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
I'll secondly love all of this. It's, it is really encouraging. I think this is the second meeting in a row where it's been an enormously encouraging report and very complete from where we are with testing to with vaccinations and particularly with the economics, you know, where we are and where we're going with helping folk through this, folks through this really difficult economic time. I actually had a specific question which you went ahead and answered before I could ask it. And that was the nature of herd immunity. And finally, I just, you know, May is just a few weeks away, actually, as it turns out. So even even more encouraging than 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 we might think. But I really, really want to express my appreciation for the visuals with the for the PowerPoints. It's really helpful in getting the scope of of what's where we are and what we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, one comment I would make is that even though all the numbers look good, we still need to remain cautious for the next few weeks. So it's not, let's not get too over enthusiastic, right? We're close. Let's not go the wrong direction. At this point, like any, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir. Currently, we have, currently, we have one speaker, Jackie Coda.
Okay.
Ms. Coda, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I would like to caution everyone with regard to calling this a vaccine. It is very important that you understand that this is an experimental drug. And in the fact sheets that are distributed to the recipients of this experimental drug, it specifically states that this does not protect everyone. It also states in the emergency EUA of the experimental drug that this does not protect everyone from the virus. This does not prevent or create herd immunity. It is an unapproved vaccine that may prevent COVID-nineteen, and there is no FDA-approved vaccine to prevent COVID-nineteen. The doctors call for more research into the vaccine's safety and effectiveness, including questions about patho- pathogenic priming resulting in severe sudden severe cytokine storm and possible fertility side effects in women of childbearing age. They also lay out a number of already known safety concerns regarding the mRNA vaccines developed by Pfizer, BioNTech and Moderna. Moderna's website specifically calls it an operating system, including that these vaccines are brand-new technology from which unexpected things must be expected. And there there are no independently published animal studies on these quote-unquote vaccines, that there are known complications that are now being minimized, minimized, minimized. And there are unknown complications regarding how these quote-unquote vaccines will affect an enormous percentage of the population. That the creators of the vaccines are immune from all liability. And finally, that the high rate of recovery of those who contract COVID-nineteen does not justify taking an experimental vaccine with unknown complications. Furthermore, people need to understand that taking this vaccine, if you die within the first year and you have life insurance policies, you might want to check with your life insurance to see if your life insurance will pay out. Also, the CDC website lists over ten thousand deaths already from this vaccination. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, I think that's we've closed out on this item. And I'll just say one thing is the best thing we can do is get the vaccine. So on, we're now on to item six point two. The Commission for the Arts Recommendation, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Barbara Goldstein and doing business as the Arts Build Community for the Cultural Arts Vision. So can we have the staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager. And I'm going to introduce your Director of your Office of Innovation and Economic Development, Adam Vandewater, who's going to coordinate our report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, councilmembers. Adam Vandewater, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to request your approval of a professional services agreement with Art Builds Community to create a ten-year cultural arts vision for the city of Livermore. The first cultural arts vision was initiated shortly after the formation of the Commission of the Arts in two thousand and four and was adopted by city council in June two thousand and seven. Implementation of the Arts Alive Plan resulted in the Art in Public Places Program, which places arts requirements on all new construction and funds all Commission for the Arts programs, including this effort this evening, led to the creation of the five-hundred-teeth Bankhead Theater and the Downtown Cultural Arts District, home to the majority of the city's sculptures, murals and arts events. Section two point four three point zero two of the Livermore Municipal Code requires that the Commission for the Arts develop and recommend to the council a five-to-ten-year cultural arts plan, including goals, implementation strategies and financing methods and to review that plan every five years and update it as necessary. Now, fourteen years later after its first implementation and as we near the end of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, fingers crossed, it's time to build on this legacy, to re-engage the community and to develop new priorities and strategies to carry us into the next decade. In anticipation of this evening, last fall, the city issued a request for proposals for the creation of a ten-year cultural arts vision and received five responses from Art Built Community Cusick Consulting before you this evening, as well as Arts Consulting Group, Bonnie Hall Fine Art, Art Asset Management, Nine dot Arts and the Cultural Planning Group. The Commission for the Arts formed a cultural arts plan ad hoc subcommittee led by the most recent Commission for the Arts Chair, Monia Lane, who reviewed the proposals and shortlisted two for detailed interviews, Art Builds Community and the Cultural Planning Group, and who incidentally created the initial plan back in two thousand and seven. The consultants were rated based on their ability to perform, their budget, schedule, proposal preparation, public process or community engagement and their program and facility service analyses. After a thorough interview and screening process, the subcommittee recommended to the Commission for the Arts the selection of Art Builds Community in partnership with Cusick Consultant Consulting, noting their extensive California master planning experience, innovative approach, diverse public engagement strategy and strength and diversity of their team. At their January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, the Commission for the Arts unanimously voted to recommend the council enter into a professional services agreement with Barbara Goldstein, doing business as Art Builds Community with Cusick Consulting in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid by existing arts funds in the Art in Public Places Fund. Upon approval of a final contract, work will occur in four phases, beginning this spring with research, benchmarking focus groups and facility tours, and then leading this summer into a community engagement process, asset inventory, a survey and social media campaign. In the fall, synthesizing these efforts and creating a plan outline with emerging themes, draft vision, objectives and policy recommendations. And then in the winter, refinement of that plan, finalization of all graphics, vision and recommendations and presentation both to this council and to the Commission for the Arts and the public. So we have a number of milestones ahead for roughly twelve-month time period. And I'm joined this evening by Barbara Goldstein. She's the principal and project lead for Art Build Community, who I would like to say a few words both about her experience and her approach, Art Builds Community's approach to this master planning effort. Barbara is an expert in creative placemaking and public art planning. She's the former public art director for the city of San Jose, is the editor of Public Art by the Book, has directed art programs in Seattle and Los Angeles and has worked as a planner, critic, editor, publisher and lecturer internationally. Clerk, if we could promote Barbara Goldstein to say a few words on behalf of Art Builds Community. And then we are, of course, both available for any question.
Ms. Goldstein, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Well, I'm very pleased to be here tonight and really grateful to be able to work with the city of Livermore. I've been working in this field for more than thirty years. And about two years ago, decided that it would be a good idea to start a succession plan and involve some new emerging arts leaders in working with me. We have a team that includes Jessica Cusick, who is an expert cultural planner. She just created the cultural planning documents, cultural district documents for the state of California. She did a cultural plan for LA County. We also have Chris Burrell, who's the managing director of the Hammer Theater Center, who will help us with analyzing the uses of the theater and and how it can be made into even a greater community asset. Amanda Rawson, who is an art historian and researcher, and Quinn Mai Nguyen, who is a marketing professional, graphic designer and events planner. So we're very enthusiastic about working on the project and have a number of ideas about how to do community outreach so that we can reach underserved populations and work with some interactive strategies that we've used in other other communities. We're really looking forward to getting started. Several of us are fairly familiar with Livermore already and looking forward to learning much more. And I'm happy to talk with you about any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Before we get to the questions on our side, do we have any public comment on this item?
Here, no comments have been received.
Okay, so open and close the public comment. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Kik.
I I'm just curious about how often we'll hear about what moves forward in in the plan. I'm just not really, this is the first time to get doing an RFP for an arts project. So will each art project come before us? Will we get regular updates? Can we ask regular updates? Just what is, what is that going to look like for us?
As a planner, I'm not developing the art projects, but what I'll be developing with my team is a long-term strategy for how the arts will grow in Livermore and how they will reach a broader population. What types of art projects should be embarked on? What types of organizational strategies should be used to strengthen the arts, especially after COVID? In terms of how often we might be reporting to city council, that's something that will be worked out in collaboration with the Office of Innovation and Economic Development and and the Arts Commission.
Councilmember, this is Adam Vandewater. I would only add that we're available to return as frequently as requested, that we certainly expect to check in with the council and the Commission for the Arts and the broader community. Frequently, the value of the cultural arts vision for the community is only as good as the public input received. So we intend this to be a very transparent and iterative process over the course of the next twelve months.
Great, thanks. I I know people will be excited to to hear this is picking back up. So whoever we can, you know, commission for the arts would probably be the best avenue. Just wanted to hear how we and others will hear about it all.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
I'm just wondering, so this is very exciting. First of all, I'm really glad to meet you. And this is, the arts are one of the central ways that we express who we are. This is, the arts are one of the central ways that we express who we are, tell our stories. With that in mind, I'm thinking about the different stories Livermore has. I'm thinking about the different organizations. That are thinking, you know, are in process of. Working on this, including the Commission for the Arts, but then some nonprofits. Around the city. So I'm wondering how you, if you could give some examples of how you go about gathering the information. About how to go forward, how we think about past, present, and future. How are you going to do it? Thanks.
Well, the outreach and the community engagement is definitely the most fun part of the process. I'll say that. So we'll be looking at the plan that already exists and. And evaluating how well it worked. You know, from the looks of it, a lot of art has happened, including the theater we built. Then we will begin working with the Office of Innovation and Economic Development to. To identify stakeholders, both internal stakeholders, in other words, people that work for the city and policymakers. External stakeholders, meaning. Community groups, arts groups, individual artists. We'll run a series of focus groups that will help give us some general areas to ask broader questions. We'll then go out and we'll be doing things like pop-up events. At farmers markets and places where people gather. Those will be led by artists. So that they're interactive events and get people engaged in fun ways. We are thinking about doing specific artist-led events that are aimed at young people. So perhaps getting young people to write poetry about the things that they care about in Livermore, or something of that kind. We'll also be using interactive mapping to map where existing cultural activities and events take place. And to invite people to suggest other things that could be happening in different parts of Livermore. And we'll be running a survey. So those are all things that we really find are extremely useful. And helping to define where activities should happen, what kinds of activities people would enjoy. What's, what's working well, what could work better, all of those things. And those kind of become part of a funnel that funnels down into a series of themes and recommendations. We would then bring to the Commission of the Arts, the city council, back to the public. And as, as, as Adam said, it's definitely an iterative process.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I thought you were done.
No, I'm just saying, we want people to feel like they're a part of the process. It's their plan and the more people we reach out to, the more consensus we will find.
So is there, as you're thinking about this. How, we have information about groups who are. Either underserved. Or who are maybe respond to one kind of art, but not to another. Is, how would you reach out to either of those groups to, I don't know, make the connections? Whether it be just a, whether it be a first-time connection or a cross connection?
Well, we would be looking to the city for guidance about groups that might be underserved. And we would reach out directly to those groups. And either in the context of joining existing meetings that people are having, or. Doing a pop-up at an event that serves that community. We'll definitely be looking towards the people that have not been heard, so that we can develop the strategies for reaching them. And the same thing goes for specific artistic disciplines. There's a lot of really great art that is made by people that come from immigrant cultures. And we'd be definitely wanting to take a look at those specifically as well.
This is Adam Vandewater, your Director of Innovation, Economic Development. Again, speaking to some of the conversations we've had at the Commission for the Arts. We're very eager to engage the community and have some of the guidance of Art Builds Community and their expertise in other jurisdictions. To ask questions such as, how do we benchmark Livermore's arts program against other comparable jurisdictions? Are our revenue sources and our, our code requirements in line with them? Are there best practices or opportunities we can take advantage of? Are there certain things that we as a community do well in the arts that we should continue to do well in and be known for and excel at? Are there communities that we are not addressing? And if so, what are the best ways to engage them? How do we connect this conversation to some of the conversations the city is already engaged in around equity and inclusion and elsewhere? And making sure that our artwork, as has been mentioned, reflects the stories and values of.
Adam, you just, we may have lost you. I take it you're done. Councilmember Kig.
I was just thinking about. As we move forward and, and some of our, our groups might wrap. Thinking specifically about equity inclusion, that just making sure that people that are involved to know that this is a, this is a new opportunity that will be lasting longer than some of our working groups. And that maybe this is an opportunity for, for people to get connected. In a way that addresses the, the goals of the culture subgroup. As much as I understand it, which, you know, being an outsider, not so much, but I would guess that it might be a good fit for some of those individuals.
Listening to the conversation, I think what I'm hearing is that there are different lenses. In which this vision will be put together from, you know, equity and inclusion, economic development sense of place. And perhaps as the vision gels, we could understand the different perspectives more explicitly and how they were incorporated in the vision. I think that's what I'm hearing. And with, and that, you know, we'll get some kind of updates. So are there any other questions or comments? If not, I think we need a resolution. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move.
Make a move. Yeah, for sure.
You can second it.
I will. It's your turn.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Kig and seconded by Vice Mayor Monroe. We have a roll call, please.
That's Member Banano.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kig.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. I can't remember. Did we do the public comment? I think we did on this one, right?
I don't think we did.
No, we did, and there was no public.
Yes.
Yeah, we did. Because I mean, otherwise Jason would have been asleep at the switch. So with, I think it's close to nine o'clock. That's where we traditionally take a break. Let's break until nine, 10:00. And we'll come back with item 6.3. Okay, welcome back everyone from our break. We're now on to item 6.3. Discussion and direction regarding a resolution requesting that the Alameda County Board of Supervisors. Allocate resources to ensure an equitable, inclusive, and transparent redistricting process. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce Christine Martin, your deputy city manager, who will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And as you just heard from the mayor, the item before you this evening is a resolution. And the origins of that go back to February 22 of this year, where council directed staff to research ways. In which the city can advocate that a robust, transparent, and fair outreach process be conducted. For the Alameda County redistricting process. The Alameda County Supervisory Districts will be redrawn in 2021 and will be in place for the next 10 years following the 2020 census. And as you all know, these districts determine how communities are represented and which neighborhoods are divided or consolidated. The Alameda County Coalition for Redistricting is an affiliation of individuals and organizations throughout Alameda County. Dedicated to an inclusive redistricting system for the county. And they have requested that cities around the county adopt a resolution. That requests that the county engage in such a fair and transparent process. And specifically, staff has included a resolution in your packets this evening, should you choose to adopt it. That does encourage that transparency engagement process. And allows the county discretion to, to, to implement 10 different recommendations. That were outlined by the coalition. And those items, I won't read them all. They were in your agenda packet this evening. But they include items such as protecting and maintaining communities of interest. So therefore not drawing lines where communities of interest would be disrupted. Including a number, public hearings in the process for choosing a consultant that will help the county in this. And also providing meeting notices in advance so that, that folks can hear enough in time to engage in the process. And those goals expand upon the provisions of legislation that has been passed on this topic as well. So the AB 849 and AB 1276 were signed by the governor in 2019 and 2020 respectively. And those requested items in the resolution are consistent with those provisions. Therefore, staff is recommending council discuss and provide direction regarding the proposed resolution in your packet. Which requests that the county board of supervisors allocate resources to ensure an equitable, inclusive, and transparent redistricting process. And staff is available for any questions you have.
Okay, before we go to questions, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
At currently, we have one speaker, Jackie Coda. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. My question is, in reading the comments or the document that was signed by city attorney Jason Ancala. I noticed that there is a comment regarding, quote, it says, and in the past, there have been few requirements that redistricting process be fair. Transparent and engage marginalized communities. And my question is, I'd like to have the city council, please describe and classify. What community members do they consider marginalized communities and their description thereof? Please, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the city council? Okay. Let's see, who went? Who was first on that one? Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, I don't, I, I'm not actually directly going to address the question of who's a marginalized community. Because I don't think that's actually relevant to this, this motion. I have one question. I have a question for the city attorney. And then I would address the process as a whole and where that might come from, the, the specific question. First of all. Mr. City Attorney, I am actually on that redistricting committee along with a number of other city council members from other cities. Can I go ahead and comment and vote on this, or do I need to recuse myself?
Vice Mayor Monroe, this is Jason Ancala, your city attorney. Know that participation does not require you to disqualify yourself from this item. You can participate this evening.
Okay, all right. The, the general sense for what is being asked here is that. The process simply be transparent, that there are a number of communities that. Are, if, if you look at the number of cities and then at the unincorporated, incorporated areas. The question is, have all of those communities, have all of those. Different regions had a chance to comment on this. In the past, that has not actually taken place. It has been a fairly. Brief process without a lot of public input. Alameda County is very diverse in terms of size, in terms of income, in terms of geography. The cities are very greatly in composition. And so it's with that in mind that this is being proposed. And at this point, I'm speaking not only for myself, but from what I understand from, from this coalition. But also for myself, I feel very strongly that particularly Livermore out here in the Tri-Valley, along with Dublin and Pleasanton. However, we were to recommend, because there's a number of ways that one could argue are better or worse. Having our input is deeply, deeply important. And I think that's true for all the other areas as well.
Okay. Councilmember Kig.
Yeah, so from my understanding, this resolution is not asking for any specific lines to be drawn. It's asking that there's a separate, open process. If there is not a separate committee, then. The county board of supervisors could draw the lines themselves. Which historically, not, I don't know exactly the history of Alameda County, but just in general, historically, when. Elected officials draw the lines themselves, it doesn't always go very well because you want to protect your seat. So making sure that we have this a very public process so that everybody can participate. One of, one of the things that has been up for debate. In advocacy circles is, should Dublin and Pleasanton be paired with Livermore? Should Fremont be paired with Livermore? There's a difference between geographic locations and then population locations. So really, this is just us asking the county to please invite the community to weigh in. We are not taking a position on what lines are drawn. We're not taking a position on, on what group they may hire to do this. We're just asking that they invite us to, to participate. That is all.
Okay, Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, I agree. This is a good idea. I think that this is an important process. And I think emphasizing what we as a city sort of expect in terms of the process is worth doing. So I have no, no problem with certainly the idea. And I think the, sort of the points of the resolution all look very reasonable and appropriate. I'll just say one thing I have a question about in the language of the resolution where it talks about. In the past, in the past, there have been few requirements that redistricting, blah, blah, blah. I mean, is there value in having that in there? It's sort of, it's referring to the past. We're looking to the future. It sort of says, well, you, I'm going to paraphrase, you know, you screwed it up last time. Why don't we not do it that way again? Why don't we just say, here's what we'd like, as opposed to. Sort of starting off with kind of a negative. Introduction to what we're asking for. Just, just seems like there's no, no real point in having negativity in a document we'd like people to pay attention to. So that's really all I have. I favor this in general, and I think for the most part, it's well-written and, and we'll, we'll do the job.
So do you want to make a motion with that amendment?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if, if, sure, I'd be happy to make an amending motion. To essentially strike, to strike that.
Okay, we have a, well, it's not just to strike it, but to move the whole item with that struck.
Yeah, right. Now, I don't know if you want to do that as a move the recommendation and then an amending motion, or?
No, 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 you just have to move. The item with the thing struck, I believe. But we're going to ask the city attorney, that's the simplest way to do it.
Every way makes the most sense. I'd be happy to do.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney Jason Ancala. If the motion is. Councilmember Banano, based on what you've indicated so far, the proper motion would be to move staff's recommendation relative to the resolution. But striking that tail of the first paragraph where it begins to read "and in the past," through communities, to strike that language. So it'll be a motion to approve staff's recommendation for the resolution, but striking that part of the sentence of the first paragraph.
Okay, thank you for that. So I would. Okay, thank you for that. So I would move staff recommendations, but striking in the resolution paragraph the part of the sentence that begins with "and in the past" and ends with marginalized communities.
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have a, any discussion, further discussion on the item? So we've already opened and closed the public comment. So with that, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carley.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Okay, the motion by Councilmember Banano has been answered. I see, city attorney wants to say something?
No, sir, I forgot to mute my mic.
Oh, okay, I thought you were signaling me. But, see, I'm paying attention too. Okay, we are now on to, I think, the what's going to be a really good main event, which is the twenty twenty National Community Survey. Our results. We have a staff report?
We do. Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce Christine Martin, your deputy city manager, who's going to lead us through the staff report for the twenty twenty National Community Survey.
Thank you, city manager Roberts. Good evening once again, honorable mayor and councilmembers. This is Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And I believe our city clerk, Marie Weber's going, yay, is going to share the PowerPoint and advance the slides for me. As we've all just said, we're here to discuss the twenty twenty National Community Survey results. So next slide, thank you. Every two years since two thousand four, the city has partnered with the National Research Center to administer the National Community Survey. The NCS, as I will refer to it, captures residents' opinions about the community on topics such as quality of life, mobility, community design, and safety, to name a few. The data collected is used by council and the staff to inform and guide policies in key priority areas. In twenty twenty, the NCS was sent to six thousand randomly selected Livermore households. That was done in November of last year. Nearly one thousand surveys were completed, giving us a response rate of seventeen percent. And just for reference, NCS, National Research Center reports that a typical response rates are range from fifteen to thirty-five percent nationwide. So we're, we're in, in that appropriate mix. And I believe that their, their numbers, you know, I don't actually have them, but they indicated to me that re- response rates were down kind of everywhere nationwide this year, probably due to the pandemic. The margin of error for the entire survey sample is plus or minus three percent. And the survey data has been weighted to ensure that the sample reflects the community's demographic profile. Next slide. So once again, in twenty twenty, as in the years past, the survey results are extremely positive. I'm going to highlight just a few of those notable survey results in this presentation this evening. So on this slide, you can see that four out of five respondents rated their quality of life and feeling of safety as excellent or good. Scores were also high for other quality of life categories such as Livermore as a place to live, Livermore as a place to visit, and our vibrant downtown area. Next slide. And on this slide, you can see that nine out of ten respondents rate Livermore as a good or excellent place to live and raise children. And nine out of ten rate their overall feeling of safety in their neighborhood and in downtown as good or excellent. Next slide. The NCS also provides data from past surveys, which provides a great tool for comparison and looking at trends over time. Here on this slide, you can see that respondents' views of the city's overall customer service increased by seven percentage points from twenty eighteen, with eighty-six percent rating Livermore's customer service as excellent or good in twenty twenty, which is a wonderful increase for us to see. On the next slide, you can see that, well, the next few slides, I'll say, the twenty twenty survey shows that there, the greatest ratings increases were in the topic area of mobility. So on this slide, we can see that the ratings increased for walking trails and paths from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, with eighty-five percent of respondents feeling that Livermore has a good or excellent walking trails and paths. And on the next slide, again, related to mobility, you can see that the ratings increased from eighteen to twenty with sixty-eight percent of, of the respondents rating Livermore's travel by bicycle as good or excellent. And that's up thirteen percent from twenty eighteen. And on the next slide, this looks at public parking. And this area saw a percentage increase of eighteen percent. So in twenty twenty, sixty percent of respondents felt that Livermore's public parking was good or excellent. And that's up from forty-two percent in twenty eighteen. And lastly, in mobility, we have traffic flow on major streets. That saw a percentage, fourteen percentage increase from twenty eighteen. Next slide. One of the other things that the citizen survey does is allows us to ask custom questions unique to Livermore. And in the twenty twenty survey, we asked three unique questions. The first asked respondents to rate the level of importance of addressing impacts of climate change on Livermore. Sixty-four percent thought it was very important or essential, and another twenty-two percent thought it was somewhat important, with only twelve percent thinking that it is not important. So you can see that helps us understand as we move into our climate action plan update and our general plan update, where the community is coming out on the area of climate change. On the next slide, the second question that we asked was, what is your preferred method of feedback or engaging with the city? And we asked them to provide their level of preference from strongly prefer to somewhat prefer or do not prefer on several different ways of engagement, the way that, ways that the city currently engages with folks, the city and city council. And as you can see, the two top strongly most preferred methods were email and out at community events such as the farmers markets or town halls or national night out. And our third and final question, custom question in twenty twenty, on the next slide, is how have the events since March of twenty twenty affected your survey responses? And as you can see by the pie chart, forty-one percent reported that it affected them with a mix of positive and negative throughout the, the survey, depending on the questions. With twenty percent saying that the event since March has positively affected their responses, and ten percent saying it negatively affected, and twenty-nine percent saying that there is no effect on their responses with the survey. And I will say that in my discussions with the National Research Center, a, a lot of the benchmarking that they do, which I'm going to talk about next, is done against communities that had already done their surveys prior to the start of the pandemic or in the early days of the pandemic. So a lot of the benchmarking, where you're going to see we, we are, we rank high compared to some of the benchmarks. That's even given that our survey was done several months into the pandemic. So keep that in mind as you look at the results in our comparison to our benchmark cities. So on the la- on the second to last slide here, I do talk a little bit about that comparison to the benchmarks. So let me explain a bit more. The, the survey benchmarks Livermore against other communities across the nation and also on the West Coast. And Livermore, as in past surveys, continues in twenty twenty to rank high against those benchmarks. And this year, we actually saw increases in several categories. Of the approximately one hundred and forty items for which comparisons were drawn against the national benchmarks, a hundred and twenty-five items we went, we ranked similar in. And we ranked higher in ten categories, including overall quality of business and service establishments, ease of travel by car, open space and preservation, and community support for the arts, to name a couple. And then we ranked much higher with our downtown, vibrancy of our downtown, ranking eleventh out of two hundred and fifty national communities and second out of thirty-nine West Coast communities. And lastly, I did want to talk about how the public and the council can view the twenty twenty survey results because it's different this year from any other year past. In past years, we've received PDF static reports from the National Research, Research Center, which are posted online. So those are still there from the past years. This year, we also have a static PDF that you can view. However, it doesn't have all of the categories because a service they are offering now this year, because they merged with a new company called Pollco, which is a public input technology company, it allows them to move everything to a digital format and provide a more interactive tool. So what you see on the screen here on the PowerPoint is the website where you can go to. It's our city of Livermore website that takes you directly to what's called Tableau. Tableau is the provider of, is the platform for the survey. And I just want to draw your attention. I know it's really hard to see, but what you get in there, there are a series of tabs across the top. And you can click on any of those tabs. Those are just category tabs. So you don't have to look at all of the survey questions in one foul swoop. You can just look at ones related to the category you might be interested in. And once you click on the category, I want to draw your attention. Now, one more item that you may miss if you're in there playing around, which is over in the far right-hand corner underneath the tabs, it says, select column header, and it's a dropdown. Once you select that, you'll see about ten options. You can actually filter the results by age or population, things like that. So it, it allows you to be a little more interactive with the data than in the years past. So with that, I just wanted to congratulate the council and the community on another successful National Community Survey. And I look forward to the discussion and direction from council on any areas that we can, that we can improve or come back to you with questions and answers on. And with that, that concludes my presentation this evening, and staff is available for any questions you have.
Okay, before we, thank you for that. Before we go to questions, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment has been received, mayor.
Okay, so open and close the public comment on this. I just want to say that the last thing you mentioned is Tableau. I've used that professionally and it's really powerful. So I'm glad to see the results are in there. And now I'll go on to Councilmember Kik.
Thank you for that. That's very exciting. I am struggling, when I was looking at this earlier, to see how to really play around with it, based, like, break it down. So if, if we can check into that to make sure that's truly open to everybody, or maybe it's just when we're logged in as a city, because I am unable to sort by age and different other factors.
I can certainly walk you through that tomorrow, and we can make sure that there isn't an issue with the site. I, I can say that you, I don't believe you can sort every category. If you're on the comparisons tab, that's where you can sort. Because it takes all, when you're in each individual tab, I don't believe you can.
That's a true fact. I just found it. It's just, I was hoping to do it for every tab and, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
So I, I was actually, first of all, I've done a little playing around with this. It is, it is a, the Tableau, it is a lot of fun. I was actually hoping for a demonstration, but on the fly, maybe not so much. But, but yeah, it's, it's, the amount of information we can get from that is, is enormous. I'm really delighted to see where Livermore stands. I want to just pull out two, two pieces that I think really, well, actually, three. One is that as we move forward on the downtown, the fact that we are so high speaks to the work we've done and gives me real belief that as we go forward, we're going to be all happy as, as a, as a city with that. On that same slide, actually, could you bring it up just so that those people who are, prefer to look at things and I'd be one of them?
Was it the benchmark slide, Vice Mayor?
Nah, keep, yeah, the, that one, right there, yes, compares international benchmark. Yeah, the ranked lower ones. So cost of living, well, we're not too surprised by that. Available of affordable housing, reference previous discussion earlier this evening. But then we get to residents' connection and engagement with community. And that actually surprised me and I, it surprised me, given that we are a community that really, a, a city that really reaches, you know, tries reaching out. Now, I do recognize that we're working on better forms of communication and, I mean, that the, we're, the communications focus area that Councilmember Kik and I are working on, this is something that, that we're actively focusing on. But I'm wondering if there's any, any other comments or, you know, I, I'm happy to just point that out. So that was, that, that, that was one note. And then the other is simply the incredible focus on the climate change that, aspects and how important that is. That's going to be interesting going forward because as we're focused on climate change, some of the local issues will mean we have to not only talk about it, but do something about it. So as we think about that, as residents of the city and as city electives and city staff thinking about how, how we talk about and do those things, I think it's going to be really high on the list going forward. So, um, thank you so much. This is a great, and thank you for putting it together.
Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, I just have a quick, quick comment and maybe a question. So I think this is the great, it's always great to get data, and I think this is a pretty good sample and, and it, it is telling us something. I have not had a chance to look at it in detail beyond what we heard at one of our workshops in this presentation tonight, but I will. I guess my, my feeling is, you know, it, it's easy to sort of evaluate ourselves against other cities and other cities that have taken a survey. I, I'm, I'm very interested in trends and deltas differences from last time, you know, it looked like we went up in a number of areas that are, that are important, although these are different samples. The two years, you'd get a different sample of people. So that's a little bit of a, of a difference in who you're asking, whether it's gotten better or worse. But Christine, could you, could you remind me, did we go down in anything? I mean, I think the things we're going up in and the things people are happy with are great, and we should keep trying to do them. But was there any place that we actually dropped from the last survey? Just curious and?
That's a great question. The, the benchmark where we were lower than the benchmarks is one area of comparison. We were, let me, let me do some digging in my notes. I don't have that off the top of my head. If we were lower in any categories this year, then your, your question then is not the benchmarking one against other communities. It's against trends over time?
Yeah, for, you know, let's look at, let's look at what we're doing, which in the opinion of our residents is, you know, not as good as it was a couple of years ago. Or, you know, take credit for where we're doing better, but also look at, at what people maybe are less happy with. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that. I, I just occurred to me that, you know, that, like I said, I, I think the differences are an important aspect of, of a survey looking year to year to year or several years to what, how you're trending. So I, I'll look, dig into it a little bit more as well.
That's, that's fine. I did, I, when I went through this, that's the first thing I do actually is look at where we compare to last year specifically, and then I, I glance at the previous years in some of those categories because it is important to look at the trends over time. And I, I can just tell you, my, my gut is from, from the months ago that I looked at that, there were very, very few, I'm probably less than ten, probably less than five out of the hundred and forty-some odd categories, did we go down lower? If, when you're looking at the Tableau data and you're clicking on the different tabs, for example, like one of the categories is governance. And I just pulled it up right now. I'm looking at it. The first category that they rank is public information services. So those are, how available is information to the public in, in Livermore? And that might not include just the city public information. And that trend And that trend is, it says in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen, it gives the percentage that rated it as good or excellent, and then in two thousand and twenty, and it says similar. So they're saying that that is, they're comparing our percentage to, to how other cities did in the benchmarking compared to the, the other, to the other years as well. So that's a great way, if you're just scrolling through the data, to kind of go, oh, similar, similar. And look for the similar, look for the higher. There are very few lowers in, in that. So just wanted to draw your attention to how the data reads online.
Okay, thanks, thanks. I'm going to dig into it a little bit more, and, and I think, great job. I think these surveys are very informative for us. And, and I think our, you know, our challenge is, is what to do with the data and how to respond to it.
And, and can I just add one more thing? I'm very excited about this and passionate about it, as you can tell. Because, no, I just want to add and add and add. But the, the opposite of your question is, where did we see increases? And I did want to say, comparing the, the number of categories that saw increases, that were statistically significant increases, over five percent from previous years, is way higher than we've had in the past. Typically, we have areas of improvement and, you know, we see some areas of improvement this, this year. In two thousand and twenty, the list is significant. And I, it is in your staff report, for those that are interested, on the last page. You can see how many categories we, we raised our ratings in. So that's very cool.
Yeah, I, I, and I don't want to take away at all from, from where we've done better and where people are happy and getting happier with, with how they feel about their city. So I, I don't want to take away from that a bit. I, I also think it's important that we look at where, where changes in the other direction are. So thank you for that, and I will dig into it and let you know if I have any other questions. Thanks.
Okay, as you're looking at that, make sure, look at statistically significant changes. Councilmember Kick.
I, I did take notice of some of those places where we, we did dip, Councilmember Banano. Some of them that were significant were, you know, like access to public events and music and cultural arts festivals, like those all went down. There was no access to those things. And then there were some things I think that it's important for us to think about as we're moving on to the general plan. I don't know if it's statistically significant, but care of sidewalks, for example, went down a little bit. And access to making community decisions went down a little bit. And those are, you know, like we said, communication. So I think if we, you know, want to dive into this a little bit as individuals and maybe just take note of, of what things we should be thinking about as we're, we move forward. I think that would be a, a good idea for us to each, see which things really stood, stood out in our minds of things that we, we need to focus on, because we're doing great in a lot of things. But especially as we're moving towards a, a, a big, a big project like a, a general plan, to look, look at where people want us to work.
Okay, I would suggest that we have a, the more detailed analysis available for us when we look at our, our budget workshop. And focus on statistical significance, as well as some of the other goals and priorities that we've got. Any other comments on this item? Okay, so what I would perhaps, you know, I think it's great work. You could maybe think about putting together a, a very short YouTube demo for people could click on and see how to navigate with Tableau. Because if you aren't familiar with it, you can get confused. But if you are familiar, it's pretty straightforward. But maybe a demo could be helpful. The other thing I wanted to point out that this, it's really gratifying to see these results. And it doesn't happen without the great work of the staff. A lot of these things are the, you know, that we're really looking at the service that the staff provides to the community. And so I think they just want to acknowledge that. Also want to acknowledge that a lot of these good results were under the leadership of the previous council with Mayor Marchand and Councilmember Coover on it, so I don't want to forget that. See, Councilmember Kick, you still have your hand up? Do you want to say something? Okay, so I, I think this was a informational item. There's no motion on this, so I, it's great work, and it's very good. So I, I presume we'll be touting this in our next newsletter. Is that right?
Yes, that's right. I'm sorry, I couldn't get to the mute button fast enough. We'll be pushing the information out on our social media channels and our newsletter now that we've brought the information and presented it to you as a council.
Okay, well, thank you so much, and again, great work. Okay, we're now on to item seven, Council Committee Reports and Matters Initiated. We'll start with Councilmember Kick.
Yes, so I will say, for someone who developed the form, I did a terrible job of filling out the form this week on time. It will be filled out and still available to the public on the website at some time. But on the tenth, we had a ValleyLink board meeting. I also went on a, a facilities tour of ABC Training. It's an opportunity for construction, electricians, to get like hands-on work experience. It was cool to see that. It was my first tour as a public elected official. And then there was also an EBCE Special Board Retreat Meeting on March twelfth. That was very cool. They talked about a lot of the projects that we are moving forward with. EBCE does local development projects. And they have this data set that our staff has been connected with. But it was, it was another piece of data that was very, very cool. You know, you could, I could play around with it all day if, if I had access. But where we were able to see where we're really, where there are huge gaps in the community for access to charging for electric vehicles, different things like that. And so they laid out, you know, how they're going to be communicating with each city about where the gaps are and how we can work together with EBCE and the city to address them. And I know that staff has already been talking about that. And then another EBCE board meeting on the seventeenth. Nothing super major decision-wise at any of those meetings that I can, that I think is super necessary, but the, it will be updated on our website once our forms go live.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. So I had three Equity and Inclusion meetings over the last couple of weeks, on the ninth, the eleventh, and the eighteenth. On the eleventh, had a Stop Waste meeting, which I'll come back to in a second. On the twelfth, had an IGATE board meeting. I'm now in, joined the board of IGATE. Very interesting progress with Daybreak Labs and so on. It's very exciting work. On the fifteenth, participated in the planning commission interviews with the rest of my colleagues. And on the nineteenth, I attended my first Altamont Landfill Advisory Committee, replacing Mayor Warner. Getting back to Stop Waste, just to alert people is that SB thirteen eighty-three is legislation that was passed a couple of years ago to reduce organic waste in jurisdictions throughout the state. And this is a fairly onerous expectation on each city and sanitary district in the state. And Stop Waste is taking it upon themselves to help organize how each of the cities within Alameda County can meet these organic waste reduction measures as outlined in SB thirteen eighty-three. And they've been working with the city staff fairly closely. And I'm just alerting my colleagues that at some point this year, we'll be faced with a question about whether or not we want to pass an ordinance that we, in which we would opt in to what Stop Waste is planning to do for the county. So again, more, more to come, but, but again, this is a fairly onerous expectation for all the cities in the state. And Stop Waste is trying the best, their best to help us, meaning us being the cities in Alameda County, to address the expectations. I do want to, on Matters Initiated, Mr. Bolton, during a public comment, asked if we couldn't provide a letter supporting SB seven ninety-nine introduced by Senator Glazer. Recall that, I think, last year, we, we had a, a, a similar letter supporting the legislation last year, which was then vetoed by the governor. And so this year, Senator Glazer has introduced SB seven ninety-nine. Our Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Kean is going to submit similar legislation on the assembly side. And I'm, I guess I'm wondering if we couldn't, as a group, dust off or ask the city staff to dust off the letter that we prepared last time and resubmit in support of, of Tesla Park and maintaining it as, as open space. And I'm asked to, asked the staff, and it would be due by April second. So I'm looking for some, what people think on, so thank you very much. So that's enough information, City Manager.
Councilmember Carling, I just want to note that visually, each of the council members did signify their support of taking our previous support letter, updating that and submitting it to, to support on SB seven ninety-nine and its companion bill, should that get introduced by the assembly person. So yes, I, your staff does have enough information, and we will make sure that that gets in before the deadline.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, I have just one meeting, committee meeting to report on. There was an LDI meeting on past Wednesday, three sixteen. The most, I think the most relevant thing is, well, two quick things. One is they are coming back up to full staffing, starting on April first. Their executive director will be back full-time. There was a lot of discussion about flex zones and the, sort of the, the vision for, as we become less restricted and have more ability to have indoor dining, what will be the, sort of the landing place for the flex zones? What would they look like? What would the whole downtown look like? Kind of an expanded question, I think, is, you know, there, there are decisions a little bit beyond just how much parking we return, how much dining we leave. What does it look and feel? Any tents that remain? I think it's, it's something I know staff is working on. LDI is playing a role in as well. So I think there is a lot of interest in that, and I think as Mr. Roberts already told us, that'll be moving forward. So I think as a liaison to that committee, I'm keenly interested in, in sort of keeping track of progress on that. So I think that's, that's really, unless anybody has any questions about that, that's really all I have on that.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, I, I, I'm not actually quite sure how, how to do this, this, this evening. I did actually submit my, my forms. I did it late, so they're not included in the supplemental package. But, so I'll say a couple of words. On the eleventh, well, so the ninth, a, a, along with Councilmember Carling, attended the Equity and Inclusion Meetings. We, it was Group C and Group D, meaning we were, our first meets, first subgroup meeting with youth engagement and then meeting with the affordable housing. And then on the eighteenth was the first in a series of storytelling workshops that are a separate track designed to discuss, or designed to help people reach across borders and, and, or, reach across, build bridges. That's what I'm looking for. I did write all this down. It was much better when I wrote it. So that, that was that. In addition to the planning commissions, again, Councilmember Carling and I interviewed for advisory bodies and made recommendations for Airport Commission, Beautification Committee, and Camp Outreach Committee. On the eleventh and the twelfth, I attended Innovation Tri-Valley meeting there with the Housing, Infrastructure and Transportation Subcommittee. And then, and in which we had a really interesting presentation from C-MAX on the ways in which, as the gravel plant moves towards completion over the next several decades, how that will, the, that area will be transitioned into open space and walking trails, bike trails, and so on. And then the, the, the most interesting thing about the general meeting, the, the meeting the next day with Innovation Tri-Valley was a discussion of digit, working on the digital divide, which we're working on as a city or region, and also at the state level. And then I had the pleasure of standing in for the mayor with the Hindu Community and Cultural Center as they presented awards for the good work that they are doing in the community. And I was able to do that virtually. So I, I got to have practice doing it a couple of times. And it was a pleasure to see the good work that this community has done for, for Livermore. So that's all I have.
Okay.
I know, I, I forgot to my matters. I can do it after you, but you generally go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to check in about, I know a lot of us got a lot of emails about a bike accident. And we, Mark, you said at the beginning of the meeting that we will have a capital improvement special meeting in May, I think is what the month that you said. I would just hope that at that time, we could prioritize. I, I'm looking at, it's in our active transportation plan, it's supplemental materials. And each, each area has a, a number, and then how it's described. And the trail connections that are described as high intensity are the areas I would like us to talk about. High intensity being that there's a lot of potential conflict. This is my underst, understanding. If that is correct, I would like to prioritize those high-intensity crossings when we talk about our capital improvement plan. So we understand why we're prioritizing those versus others.
Okay, so I, I think what I heard was to have the information so that we could make the decision with respect to that at the time.
Yes, like the, the document that I'm looking at, I can't sort. It's a PDF. So if we can have that information ahead of time, so we know what are the high-intensity things? You know, this, this specific intersection that was discussed is a high-intensity, low-cost crossing. There are also high-intensity, high costs and medium intensities. And just so we.
So I think, so I think the point is you want the information so we can decide where to prioritize it. So I think staff heard that, and I think we, you want to get the head nods from the rest of us, and so I'm fine with asking for that. Okay, any other matters initiated? Okay, so I attended a few meetings. It's in the report. On the one I would want to focus on, the Alameda County Mayor's Conference. And there were two things that are relevant for what we heard tonight and then what's going on. Is that one was on the presentation on the impact of COVID nineteen on children's health. And so the mental health thing that we've got going here is going to be very helpful. And then the other thing that was discussed and, and passed was a resolution denouncing anti-Asian racism. And that's where that, all the various cities are passing that resolution as well. With respect to Matters Initiated, you, you mentioned, the city manager mentioned, and Councilmember Banano mentioned the, what we're going to do in the future with respect to downtown post-COVID. And what I would ask is that you mentioned that the plan was going to be out there, but I would like it publicized and maybe a, perhaps a memo, really outlining what the process is, who's on point, and how do the various members of the community, we've got the business, downtown businesses, we've got the residents, and, you know, how do they input as to where we go? And I, the way I would describe this is we did everything we could to help the downtown businesses. is we did everything we could to help the downtown businesses. Now we're coming out of the pandemic and the I'd say the downtown looks a little worse for the wear. And so we've got to make it look better. And we want to get all the input in there. So if you could put together a uh a summary of how people uh can input and who's really in charge of this, uh that would be very helpful. So I get head nods on the rest of that. Okay, good. And then the second thing I'll mention, I was in a meeting with the East Bay Regional Park District earlier. And the question came up about how uh what they're doing with respect to trails and what we're doing and where's the overlap? And one of the uh items was there's a chance for some funding and in particular, the Iron Horse Trail. And so they were looking at a segment of that and will be uh evaluating to what extent we can cooperate. But one of the things that came out of that conversation, I realized afterwards that talking with uh Paul Spence is that pieces of the Iron Horse Trail are higher priority than others, but some of those pieces have um issues with respect to just trying to get the rights away. And it's one of these chicken and egg things that if we had the rights away, then when a funding opportunity came up, we could take advantage of it, but we don't have the rights away and it's going to take a while. So what I would request when we come back to our, again, our budget uh uh workshop and our prioritization and the active trails and all of that is some uh sense of what the highest priority pieces of the Iron Horse Trail are and what it would take to actually acquire the rights away. And I'll just say as an example, for years, we'd heard about T six and the trouble with trying to get the rights away. And it wasn't until Beth Wilson came to a meeting and we said, let's get it done, that all of those issues with respect to the rights away staff salt them. So it's the same kind of thing here is let's understand our trail connections. What rights away are uh do we need, especially on the high priority? And then let's go about acquiring them. So that when the funding is available, we can actually build the the connections. So can I get head nods on that as well? Okay, so I think uh we're done at this point and uh we will adjourn. And that's to a uh special city council meeting on March twenty-nine at five P M to interview the general plan consultants. And then there will be a regular city council meeting on April twelfth at seven P M. Uh, both meetings will be held uh virtually using Zoom. So thank you and we are adjourned.